Okay, good evening, everyone. Tony Gonzalez, planning board chair, calling to me, calling the meeting together for June 7th, the planning board meeting. We'll start with a roll call of the board members. Larry Hassan.
Here.
James Sweeney.
Here.
Rita Das.
Here.
And it's just me, Tony Gonzalez, so there's a four-person board. Pam, quickly, what does that mean for tonight?
Anything that is a return to the ZBA or a site plan approval must receive all four votes.
Okay.
Anything less than that, the motion fails.
Thank you. Also in attendance, Rob May, Director of the Planning Department. Chief Williams. And Evan Sears. Okay. Few housekeeping items, the agenda's changed, that went out earlier today. Number three. Well, first of all, number two, permission to return to ZBA 1449 Main Street is continued to August. So if you're here for that applicant, it won't be heard tonight. The next one is returned to ZBA 6870 Field Street has been withdrawn. So those two are removed from the agenda for this evening.
And Madam Chair, Belgravia was also continued to 8-2.
Belgravia, what number was that, Pam?
That's on the top, because he had requested a continuance quite early on, so.
My poor old eyes do not see it, so.
It is, it's right underneath.
Oh, got it. There it is, yeah. Lot 2 Belgravia continues to 8-2. Okay. So on the agenda for tonight, we have permission to return to ZBA Amelia Estates. We have site plan approval, 143 Route 260, plot 60-9, site plan approval. We have site plan approval for 93 Pleasant Street. And last one is definitive subdivision 49 Keswick Road. So first, we will start with review and acceptance of the meetings from May 3rd. Does everyone have a chance to review those?
Yes.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept minutes from May 3rd.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, Larry Hassan.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Rita Das.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Okay, thank you. No A and Rs, right Pam?
There are none. There is one subdivision plan for 135 Elliott Street, so if you will stop in and probably not until the first of the week, because I'll type up whatever comes out of this meeting and you can stop in at one day. I'll let you know.
All right, and my apologies, I have to back up and read this statement. I've got ahead of myself here, since this is a recorded meeting on Zoom. This meeting is being recorded in accordance with the government order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 38, Section 20. Real-time public participation and comment can be addressed to the planning board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the chair via the question and answer function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record. For those of you joining by phone, press star nine. If you want to ask a question, please raise your hand. A copy of this recording will be on the city's webpages. All votes will be done via roll call to ensure account accuracy. Okay, sorry about that, guys. All right. You going to do the lot releases, Pam?
Yes, we have a request from Charlie Macy to release lots 3, 4, 5, 7, 14, 15, and 16 on Cypress Drive. As you can see with all the information that was put online, all the infrastructure is in the road, it has all been inspected, and the base course has been put on the road. So he's looking to at least release these, so he can start building the houses. Okay. And I received a call from 1-1 Counselor Tom Minicello, and he apologized, but it's budget hearings tonight, and he wanted to be on record as in favor of this. He said that he's been working closely with both Charlie and the neighbors.
Okay. Sounds good.
Do you see Counselor Minicello in the audience? I am going to
He was gonna try to.
Try to bring him up as a panelist.
Yeah, he's got his.
There he is. He, when he raised his hand, he moved.
He did, he moved to the top.
Hi there, how are you?
Good, Tom, how are you?
I'm okay, I'm driving, so I'm really not doing what I'm supposed to be doing, but I did want to tune in, I'm on my way to the budget hearings, as Pam mentioned. And I do want to, you know, state for the record that I did meet with all the neighbors, well, many, many of the neighbors over off of Cypress, and and talked and met with Charlie. You know, Charlie's been doing what he said he would do, and been cooperating, and I think that he is, and he's been very receptive to suggestion, and I have feel confident that we can work with Charlie, because he's been, I think, doing a pretty good job over there, and you know, I am in favor of releasing those lots. If the water's fine.
All right, thank you for that. Anything else for board members? Is there a motion?
Motion to release, release lots Cypress Drive, lots 3, 4, 5, 7, 14, 15, 16.
Second? Okay. All right, roll call vote. Larry Hassan.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Rita Das.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. All right, thank you. Yeah, moving on, Augusta Estates.
Okay, Augusta Estates. This one's a little different. The property's being sold, and the new owner is requesting lots 1, 2, 13, 14, and 15 on Augusta, and Lot 3 on Cross. All these lots exist now on on current pavement. That part of the road is already in. So what he wants to do is start building these houses, and then that way he'll be able to have the funding to start the roadway, roadwork for the rest of it. So there's no letters on this, no nothing, these exist on on existing roadway, and utilities are already in the road.
All right. So Pam, just to be clear, what's proposed in these lots does not require any infrastructure?
It does not. The water and sewer is already in to service these lots. They'll just be bringing parcels in as a new connection.
Gotcha.
The remainder of the project that you approved is all new infrastructure and all new roadway.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve lots Augusta Estates 1, 2, 13, 14, and 15 Augusta Ave, and Lot 3 Cross slash Augusta.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Larry Hassan.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Rita Das.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. All right. Lot release.
Okay.
Oh, one more.
42 North Quincy. This was the existing house on North Quincy. Jim Morrissey had subdivided off the property, and we held the original house, the three new houses are already up. The I received all the letters from Water Soar, and I received a letter from Highway on the paving in the road that he needed to do. And this will be the final release.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to release 42 Quincy Street.
Second.
Roll call vote, Larry Hassan.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Rita Das.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. All right, thank you. So now moving on to proposed zoning change. This piece is a tad bit confusing. Who would like to explain the situation for the board in public, I guess?
Rob? Did you receive the email that I sent later, late this afternoon?
I haven't been back in my emails in about an hour, so.
Sort of an explanation, or?
Okay, you want to take a stab at it, then?
Why don't you take, yeah, read that email.
Okay, so the, there's two orders. One is number 285, or 275. And that was recommended favorable by the ordinance committee to the full city council. And it deals with 2728, Section 2728. And the change would be, so it's 2728 zero, or O. That change would remove the provision for outdoor seasonal seating from C1 zones. That's the change. The change they're proposing to 2729 3G will remove the provision for outdoor seating as a special permitted use. The change for 27 3I deletes I in its entirety, and I had to do with zoning board. So what happens here is zoning's accumulative, so if you allow it in an I1, you get to do it in an I2 or an I3. If it's only allowed in an I2, then you can't do it in an I1. The part of this that was tabled it would allow for outdoor seating in C2. So what they tabled was number what's listed as number one for you? Everything was being removed from what's number two. I don't think I, yeah. I don't think I made that any better.
Can I take a crack at this?
Yes, please.
Two years ago, at the beginning of COVID, Counselor Thompson with had introduced a zoning ordinance to allow for outdoor dining, which had not been really permitted in the city before, or at least not specifically named in the ordinance. And the building department, who is responsible for enforcing these ordinances, has always gone by the rule that if it's not listed, then it's not allowed. And so we worked through the zoning process, we amended the code, we allowed for outdoor dining in a C1 zone, which would allow it in C1, C2, C3. Now, two years later, a city councilor has come up, and I think although I have not heard this from the city councilor, we really don't know what he's trying to accomplish. We think he's trying to put it back into the ordinance. Sorry, Siri. So it's really confusing in, in what they're trying to do. And furthermore, the, one of the, one of the motions was passed, another one was tabled. So what they're ending up doing is prohibiting outdoor dining anywhere. So we are recommending that you refer this back to the ordinance committee unfavorably, and we can try to deal with it on the city council level, rather than trying to amend something here in our planning board meeting.
Okay, let me just ask a couple of questions. Because it is very confusing. So do you think the counselor's trying to keep the outdoor dining or remove it?
I think he's trying to keep the outdoor dining, he's just put it in the wrong spot.
Okay. Um. Chief Williams, are you still there? Chief Williams?
He's on a call, oh, there he goes.
Hi. Have you heard of any issues, safety issues, fire issues, or any harm with the outdoor dining that we've had since the pandemic?
No, we haven't. I mean, we've had a couple of speed bumps with some safety issues, but nothing that haven't been curable. I'm sorry, my computer keeps going in and out. But there's none that I'm aware of. We really don't have any outdoor dining right now that I'm aware of.
We can't, we do it like Brax and places like that, and I'm actually in favor of that. It's additional revenue, not only for the city, but for the business owners and other larger cities are doing, so I'm glad to hear that clarification that the counselor's not trying to remove it. He's just trying to put it in the right spot. Did I follow you, Rob?
I think he's trying to put it in the right spot, but he's mistaken as to where he's, he's putting it.
Okay.
I have a question. So Rob, in this proposed change, we're, we're looking to start this at the C2 zone and then move it up to the 3. Is that the suggestion about the C1?
Well, what, what you have in front of you, and the only motion amendment that is alive right now would prohibit outdoor dining, period.
So if we, if we approve this, that prohibits outdoor dining?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And so, if I may finish, we, so we need to do a roll call vote on 1 and 2? Or is 1 tabled and off this agenda?
Pam, which one, is 1 off the agenda or number 2 off the agenda? Or do you have them grouped together on the?
No, the first one is the one that was off the, the one that got tabled by.
Okay. So the second one, I don't have the agenda in front of me, so I don't know what number it is. But it's that second one that we need to refer unfavorably. And just, you know, as a safeguard, our, our, what we're doing is a recommendation.
Yeah, I would, I strongly agree with that.
Because the first, the first one, the one they tabled, would be the one where they put it into the C2.
Okay.
The second one is removing it from C1.
So planning board members, 1 is off the agenda. We're going to vote on number 2. Now, open it up to questions to the planning board, if there are any others.
I don't have any more questions on it. I, I think it's a good idea to have the outdoor seating. I, I'm a little confused about why there's, there's a concern with even outdoor seating at all. I mean, don't we have some outdoor areas that might not be in these areas that need all the barriers and all that already, so? Doesn't make sense to me, but.
Right. Brazil Grill over on the east side has a beautiful outdoor dining park, you know? There's a lot of nice outdoor dining areas, and I would encourage more restaurants had the space to do so.
Oh, sorry. I guess my clarification would be, we're trying to restructure this, but this might not be the correct restructure amendment or proposal. Is that kind of what the assumption is on the second piece here?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, I do have another question. If, if we deny this, or do we send this back for a restructure, right? Because if we deny it, that, does that leave, leave this hanging in the wind?
No, we are completely advisory. So even if you said 100%, we, we love this, they could still vote against it, so it doesn't we don't, we don't matter.
Okay.
Thanks. Any other questions for planning board? Is this open to the public, Pam?
Sorry. I was looking on mute. This is, this is the zoning change, right? This is, like, if we approve, what's gonna happen next?
The zoning, when a, when a ordinance amendment is introduced, it's referred by city council to two different places. The first is the ordinance committee, which is a committee of city council, and the second place it's referred to is the planning board, because it's a zoning ordinance. And the planning board is required to make a favorable return or a unfavorable return to the ordinance committee and to city council as a whole. But whether we choose favorable or not favorable, it's still just a recommendation from us.
Okay. Thank you.
So we are not going to blow up the world tonight.
Are we voting individually on these two, or as a package?
Just on number 2.
I think the first one just stays, because the council tabled it, it's probably going to be retooled, and they would have to send it back to you.
Pam, is this open for public comment, or no?
It is, but I don't see anybody.
And for clarification, it's the ordinance that is numbered 275.
Okay.
Anybody with a comment, please raise your hand. And I don't see them, so let's.
So, planning board members, we need a motion to recommend favorably or unfavorably.
Motion to recommend unfavorably.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Larry Hassan.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Rita Das.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes, clarification, recommend unfavorably. All right. Thank you. This brings us to permission to return to ZBA Amelia Estates. CLM Development Attorney James Burke.
Oh, you got Evan, and Jim, and Charlie.
I don't think there's anybody else there.
No, I think.
Park and Community of Access is there now.
Well, I'll promote them to panelist, and then to co-host, although it's a bit late to start taping. Counselor?
All right, Madam Chairwoman, if you're ready to go, I represent the and this project in Amelia Estates is one that the planning board has seen before. We appeared before the zoning.
Mr. Burke, you're echoing, there's an echo on your.
Feedback.
On my end?
Do you have more than one microphone or computer or phone going? Now we can't hear you.
I think it was my microphone was back feeding Jim, so I'll, I'll stay on mute unless I'm talking.
Thank you. Thank you again. So we appeared before the zoning board of appeals with a request to increase the amount of lots that were authorized as part of the definitive subdivision that was filed with your board, and we sought to have 18 lots. We had a, I think, a constructive hearing before the zoning board of appeals. I know that the chairman was very involved in the discussion and made certain recommendations. They ultimately denied the request, because that was the only request that was before them, based on the filing. And in the suggested modification, it was suggested that we consider reducing one lot, and that would have been on lots 7, 8, 9, and 10, and increase the frontage of those particular lots from 125 to something larger. So Evan got to work, and the net result is that we in fact have reduced the lots from 18 to 17, and lots 7, 8, and 9, which were 125 feet, are now 167, 150, 158.9, and 151.8. In addition, what we have done is a design that I think was recommended by the planning board in initial discussion, and included the detention basin on a single lot. And lastly, as part of that process, they were able to remove the tails on some of the lots, so that they're more structured in terms of a rectangular design. So what is before the board is a request to be allowed to return the zoning board of appeals. The standard is that there is in fact been material changes. I think there have been substantial material changes here, and we respectfully request that the board consider granting the request to be allowed to return the zoning board of appeals. I know that if you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But if you want to look at the decision itself, they specifically in the decision identified that the board suggested a design change. And that's what we are here today with that design change.
Very good, thank you. Open it up to the planning board for questions.
Just for everyone else, and this is open to the public too, I'd like to maybe see some of those changes. I have not had a chance to review them. Can we see that somewhere on?
Evan, can you pull that up?
Thank you. And just kind of walk us through that. You had mentioned 7, 8, 9, and 10 are the ones that changed, along with the retention.
Go ahead, Evan, I think you were muted.
Okay, there we go. Can you hear me, and can you see my screen?
Yes.
All right, perfect. So this is the plan that we had before the zoning board of appeals, and you can see that we had six conforming and 12 reduced frontage lots. And the area of concern was on this side here, that 125 you didn't like. And then if you see here, we have our drainage detention basin. It spans two lots through here. But what we did is we took the recommendations of the zoning board, we reduced to 17 lots, and then we were able to make an additional conform, so we have seven. And the lots 7 through 10, 11 or so, we've increased to at least 150 feet of frontage. And so that was another request that was asked of us. And then you can see the drainage easement here, it's now completely on one lot. And then these lots through here are also squared off a little bit better, where before we had some trapezoidal shaped lots through here, so now they're much squarer.
So Evan, this Larry again, so that the, the lot that has the retention pond on it, that at one point we just noticed was two lots, now it's one, correct?
That's correct.
Are there any lots under 150?
There are the lots on the right side over in this area here, we have a few that are 125, 125. If I zoom in, you can see the, the chart here, so Lot 2, 3, 4, and 6, 14, 15. Four, I'm sorry, 6, these other ones here. These other ones here, as indicated, are on the cul-de-sac. So as soon as you get past that, they do widen up, so the actual width accommodates the square. I'll also say that all lots shown on this plan have adequate area and lot width that we show the requisite rectangle.
Other questions?
Yeah, I know, you know, when we saw this from the zoning board, it was just a matter of, you know, exactly what they have adjusted here, and just the concern for the frontage and especially around that retention pond. So that's how it went.
Right, very good. Rita, anything?
So it's just that, that lot in the corner, like, you know, bottom left corner, that one increased, I mean, the frontage is increased?
That's right. So previously, we had two lots across there of 125. Now this lot with the detention basin on it completely complies. It has complying frontage and area and width.
So, so on the left-hand side of this road, it used to be six, and now you have seven, right? I mean, 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 8. It used to be nine, and now you have eight there.
Yeah, we reduced by one lot on this side, that's right.
Okay. Yeah, but some, I don't know, I still feel that it's not, you know, it's not substantial. It's still feel, you know, it's, I mean, that's my thinking, you know, that's what I feel. I still feel that lot is like, you know, it's not substantially changed.